Alright, looks like it's uh. Seven thirty, we can start the meeting. Hold the order, the. Regular meeting planning board, Ocean Township, seven thirty PM. Amy, can you do a roll call for us, please?
Sure. Mr. Defilia?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Dr. Fisher? Ms. Close?
Here.
Mr. Siano? Mr. Weinstein?
Mr. Siano is here.
I see him.
Speaking and I'm not on mute.
Okay. Mr. Weinstein, you too? Maybe he's not back yet. Mr. Beal?
You're.
Mr. Adis? Mr. Badnovich?
Here.
Mr. Carmonica? And Chairman Benedetto?
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, but liberty and justice for all. Amy, Mr. Weinstein is here now.
I see him. Hi.
The notice of requirements for the open public meeting law for this meeting has been satisfied. A copy of the notice has been sent to the press in the coaster and filed to the Ocean Office of the Township Clerk on August tenth, twenty twenty one. Board policy, no new cases will be started after ten thirty PM and no new testimony taken after eleven PM. All meetings will be videoed, video and audio taped. And shown on the Township of Ocean Community Cable Channel, Channel twenty-two on Verizon Files and Channel seventy-seven on Cable Vision. We have a first order of business resolution memorialization of J and I Development LLC Block fifty-one lots nine and ten, four oh nine and four fifteen Runyon Avenue, Ocean Minor Subdivision Approval. Can I get a motion? I make a motion to memorialize it. Can I get a second?
Second.
Amy?
Amy, you're muted.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, um, Mr. Defilia?
Yes.
Let's see who else. Ms. Close?
Yes.
Um. Mr. Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
And Chairman Benedetto?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, next order of business is the proposed rehabilitation areas as provided at NJSA forty A, twelve A dash fourteen, the local redevelopment and housing law for authorizes the governing body of the municipality to designate an area in need of rehabilitation if it determines by the resolution that the conditions exist. Mr. Higgins?
Yes.
You're well versed in this area. Can you please give us a synopsis?
Yeah, so, yeah, the board's charge is to look at the designations that the council has sent to the board for two separate areas that are deemed to be areas in need of rehabilitation. There are a number of standards, criteria that can be used to designate an area in need of rehabilitation. One of those standards or criteria is that fifty percent or more of the housing units in that area are more than fifty years old. The report that was submitted by council says that in both areas approximately eighty percent of the houses are more than fifty years old. So when I look at that, I think it definitely does meet the criteria. And the board's charge is again, it's a very narrow, very narrow charge. It's not to determine whether or not the area as defined is appropriate. It's determined whether or not the area meet that that is defined meets that criteria. And it's it's simply that. It's not, it's not saying that the board agrees with with designating the area or not. It's just whether or not it does meet the meet the criteria that's statutorily required.
Okay. Does anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Higgins? So Jim, do you feel that the the plan meets the criteria?
Yes, I do. It's it states that eighty percent of the units, it's based on a state study that was done. And it states that eighty percent of the units in each area are more than fifty years old. And while it's clear that in some instances there have been improvements to some of those units, I can't see any way that thirty percent of the units within either of those areas have been been rehabilitated or knocked down and replaced, so that I think it definitely does meet the criteria.
Okay. Ron, what do we do? We just make a motion to say that the plan meets the criteria? You're muted.
I'll answer it, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's exactly what you just said. You would make a motion that you find that it does meet the definitions. And you just have a letter go back to the council indicating as such.
I'll make a motion that based on Mr. Higgins' recommendations and what I saw on the on the plan that it meets the criteria. Can I have a second?
I'll make that second, Mr. Chair.
Can we have a roll call, Amy?
Yes, Mr. Defilia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Siano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Adis?
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
Chairman Benedetto?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Case, DL thirty-five land LLC. It's not really a new case. I guess they're bringing something to us. Block thirty-three lot nineteen dot zero two sixteen oh three, Highway thirty-five, Ocean Zone C seven. This is an application for amended site plan approval, modifying the building layout sizes of the three buildings and other associated site changes. So.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can, just going right off of what you just said, it's not a new application. This is not an invitation to the board to revisit this this site. It's already been approved. It's not an invitation to, we argue or we litigate whether this is the proper thing for this site. That's already been approved. There are no variances here. The sole focus of this application this evening is whether the modifications to the site plan work or not from a site plan perspective. And I just want to make sure that the board understands that as we go into the applicant and their presentation. That again, we're not reopening the application. That's already been decided. It's done. It's just solely about these changes that are being made and whether in that context the site continues to function properly or not. And that's it.
Okay, very good. Ms. Walters or Mrs. Walters? I'm not sure.
Ms. Is just fine. Thank you. Mrs. I look for my mother-in-law.
Okay, Ms. Walters, I'm sorry. How would you, I'd say, let's have you start with entering your, I guess you have exhibits. And then and then you can start your presentation.
Sure, I have with me this evening, Mr. Michael Gallagher, our engineer. He has our exhibits. We did submit them electronically, so Amy has them too. There are three exhibits and Mr. Gallagher will be controlling that this evening. So if he can have permission to share them when necessary. The exhibits are as an Ocean Commons Site Plan Exhibit.
And Ms. Walters, if I may, the the exhibits that I have and I pre-marked them for you. Exhibit Exhibit A one is the preliminary and major, excuse me, the preliminary and final major site plan revised. A two is the Miller Ale House Design Four Plans. A three is the Turning Point Four Plans. And then I actually have an A four, the Chick-fil-A Four Plans and Elevations. So I have those four exhibits. And then on the board's side, I have the following. I have Exhibit B one as in Board One, which will be the Board Engineers Report dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. B two will be the Board Planner's Report dated April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. And Exhibit B three will be the Environmental Commissioners Report dated April twentieth, twenty twenty-two. So those are the pre-marked exhibits that have been distributed to the board and the board has those exhibits. If there are other exhibits, we can mark them along the way.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lexington.
You're welcome.
We do have three additional exhibits. If you want to mark them now or wait until Mr. Gallagher refers to them, I defer to you, Mr. Chairman, on your preference.
Why don't we do, Mr. Chair, why don't we do them as they're being presented, just to make it a little bit more orderly?
Concur.
Great, thank you. So I just want to introduce myself. My name, good evening. My name is Cheryl Lynn Walters. I'm a partner at the law firm of Nima Davis and Goldstein. I am filling in for Ms. Krimko this evening. She couldn't be here. But I just so the board is aware, I am intimately familiar with the history here. I've read all the prior transcripts. I briefed the case when it was with the court last, so I was the natural fill-in for Ms. Krimko in her absence. As you've indicated, the property is located at the intersection of Deal Road and Route thirty-five. The board is intimately familiar with it and Mr. Gallagher will refresh your recollection with that as we go. The application tonight is for amended final site plan only. We do not seek any variances or waivers associated with this application. And pursuant to the municipal land use law and your code, public notice was not required for an amended final site plan application. We did submit the application on April eighth. It was reviewed by the Environmental Commission, as you're aware. And both of your professionals have issued brief reports, which I understand will be read into the record at some point. My only witness this evening is Mr. Gallagher, our project engineer. I do have Mr. Gobkirk with us. He is, or Gockberg, I'm sorry, with us. He's one of the architects, but I don't anticipate you'll really need to hear from him. He's here if we need him, however. So at this point, I understand your general process is to have your professionals read their reports into the record before we commence.
Yeah, in a short, in a short type of situation, I would say that I agree with that, but I think I'll let you guys continue.
Okay, thank you. So we could bring Mr. Gallagher up and have him sworn, please.
Mr. Gallagher, do you swear any testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self you got? I didn't. Yeah, Michael, I think you're, I think you're muted. We can't hear you.
I guess that concludes the meeting this evening.
The beauty of Zoom.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
We'll just try this again. Mr. Gallagher, do you swear a testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self of God?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lexington. So, Mr. Gallagher, I understand you've appeared before this board before, have you?
I have. I was involved with the original application, although I did not provide the complete direct test engineering testimony. I was there, I was sworn in and participated and answered questions, but the entire project and plans have been prepared under my direct supervision.
So why don't you give the board an explanation of your professional credentials?
So after graduating from Ocean Township. Well, there's, I don't know if we need that this evening. As you said, he's appeared before this board before. And, Mr. Chairman, unless you want to hear them, I don't think it's necessary. The board can accept it as an expert.
It's okay. I'm good. No, we don't need to hear them.
Okay, great.
I'm sure you'll have plenty to say.
So while we're going to try to keep this as quick and easy as we can for you, Chairman. Mr. Gallagher, you indicated you've been the primary project engineer for the plans in this project have been prepared under your supervision. That's correct?
That's correct.
All right. So can you please explain to the board the changes to the plan that are proposed with tonight's application?
Sure. So as the board is extremely well familiar, this project was approved for preliminary and final major site plan and minor subdivision in October of two thousand nineteen. It was a mixed-use development, including seventy townhomes as well as a one hundred and fourteen-room hotel, fifty-four hundred square foot, quick-service restaurant, fifty-five hundred square foot, convenience store with fuel sales. And then a mix of other uses on the commercial side, including seventy-seven hundred square foot multi-tenant retail building, a thirty-five hundred and fifty square foot bank and two restaurants, a seventy-two hundred approximately square foot sit-down restaurant and approximately six thousand four hundred and twenty square foot sit-down restaurant, which also included a little over forty-seven hundred square feet of second-floor office space. Those uses were somewhat preliminary at the time. We were envisioning Turning Point for the for the sixty-four hundred square foot restaurant and Miller's Ale House for the seventy-two hundred square foot restaurant. Those those plans have since become more firm. They have, there's leases signed for those two tenants. So in the process of finalizing those agreements, the tenants requested some some minor modifications to their 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 buildings and notably the locations of their buildings. So Amy, I'm not sure, am I set up to share my screen?
Yes, I made you a co-host.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Did you get it?
Yep. I'm just setting up. Okay. Hopefully everyone can see my screen. All right, and and what exactly are we looking at here? So this, this would be Exhibit A five. This is an enlarged enlarge, as well, it's called Ocean Commons Enlargement Exhibit. This is essentially a thirty-scale rendered version of the area of the site that is has is undergoing these revisions. Is there a date on it? Uh, yes, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, right at the bottom. Okay, great. Thank you. So I mentioned the seventy-seven hundred square foot retail building, which is here. That is not proposed to change. We had proposed a thirty-five hundred square foot bank, which we're proposing to replace with a thirty-two hundred squares, essentially thirty-two hundred square foot retail building. And then the Miller's Ale House, which was originally positioned in this location, shifted over to the the corner of Deal Road down at the bottom of the plan and Route thirty-five on the left side of the plan here. So Miller's Ale House and Turning Point essentially are just changing positions. There's also very slight changes to the, as I mentioned, the architecture was very preliminary back in October of two thousand nineteen. It's more finalized now. The Miller's Ale House increased from seven thousand two hundred and twenty-seven square feet to seven thousand four hundred and thirty-four square feet. And the Turning Point, including the outdoor seating area, reduced from six thousand four hundred and twenty square feet to five thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight square feet. And then the second-floor office space above the Turning Point, which will be used for their corporate offices, decreased, increased from four thousand seven hundred and fifty-four square feet to four thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight square feet. So in total, the change in square footage is actually a five hundred and thirty-nine square foot decrease in total square footage from what was originally improved in two thousand nineteen. There were also some just general site plan modifications to accommodate this change in the building and the revision of the removal of the bank. The board may remember there was three drive-through lanes associated along the north side of the bank and extensive, you know, a bypass lane and access lanes for the the queuing of the bank drive-through. We relocated some parking and essentially moved moved around the layout a little bit to not only accommodate the the building shift, but provide more convenient parking closest to the door locations. Originally, when the Turning Point was at the 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 corner, the outdoor dining area was in this general location. We've moved it to the southerly side facing Deal Road in this location. We shifted the building further into the site to the north to better protect the existing beach tree that we're proposing to preserve, which is located here.
That's the one tree.
And generally, we made extensive upgrades to the landscaping in this area. You'll note along the fronts of the buildings, we have landscaped areas where previously it was just, it was, it was essentially sidewalk and that continues up to the seventy-seven hundred square foot building. So we'll have pedestrian level plantings, in fact, an increase of over three thousand individual plantings from the original plan. We're also proposing a variety of different hardscapes, including heavy-duty pavers in some of the key drive aisles and parking spaces to really create a very detailed and beautiful aesthetic to this area of the site. Where we shifted light poles as we needed to to accommodate the building changes. We introduced some additional street furniture, benches and receptacles, things of that nature. Along Deal Road, the board may recall, we were proposing a small paver plaza to relocate the existing Artesian well, which is located up at the corner in this location, where we modified the location and the overall layout of that plaza to basically focus on the beach tree that we're preserving. We'll have that Artesian well located right in the middle again with benches and some seating walls. And we're also introducing an additional pedestrian plaza at the intersection of Road A, which is the urban jug handle, which I'm sure the board recalls, Dr. Benedetto's Urban Jug Handle, in fact, and Road B, which is the road that goes out to Logan Road. And again, that'll be a paver plaza with pedestrian seating walls. As a result of these changes to the layout, we actually have a net increase in parking of ten spaces. We were approved at seven, four hundred and twenty-four spaces on the commercial side of the project. We're now at four hundred and thirty-four. We're still in excess of the ordinance's requirements for parking for each use as well as the overall commercial development. And despite the fact we added ten parking spaces, we actually slightly decreased impervious surfaces with this revision by a little over twenty-seven hundred square feet. And additionally, we had to make some minor modifications to our utility layouts, not the mains, the the critical infrastructure of the utilities, but just the service laterals, because obviously as buildings change, you have to shift your service connection points as needed. But most importantly, there's absolutely no change to the stormwater management system. We were able to regrade the site and make these modifications, maintaining the size, location and outlets of the approved stormwater management system. And actually, more importantly, as as Ms. Walters and Mr. Lexington mentioned, there are no no exacerbations to the variances that were granted with the original application and there's no new relief required as a result of these changes.
Do you, can I interrupt you for a second? Do you have a drawing of what it was like before you made these changes?
So I would introduce A six, which is a site titled Site Plan Exhibit, but in reality, it's a side-by-side comparison of what was approved, which is on the left. This is the approved site plan versus the current site plan. So you can see. So you had Turning Point located at the hard corner. It's now been relocated and the the footprint slightly adjusted to accommodate the change of location. You have Miller's Ale House, which this is just a essentially a prototype footprint. And this is their final footprint. They made some modifications, some customizations to basically move their their refrigeration units off the back of the building and move them to the side to this service area. And New Jersey State Building Codes require employee, dedicated employee bathrooms. Once you exceed a certain square footage within the building, I believe that's five thousand square feet. So this little bump out is actually an employee bathroom. And then I mentioned the bank. You can see the the bank on the the left here with it three drive-up lanes and a bypass lane. And that is now been replaced with with the the multi-tenant retail building. And then I mentioned the the pavers and some of the additional landscaped areas. But this is your, essentially your pre versus post. And the hotel, Chick-fil-A, Wawa are all completely unchanged. The urban jug handle is unchanged. All the access points completely unchanged and the residential side of the project completely unchanged. Mr. Gallagher, you, I had marked in as a for the Chick-fil-A Four Plans and Elevations. Was that an unnecessary exhibit? We provided that for the board's information. So Chick-fil-A was approved at a building height a little over twenty-two. Yes, a little over twenty-two feet. I'm sorry, about twenty, sorry, excuse me, twenty-one feet, eight inches, thereabouts. And that included a parapet wall that was measured to the top of the parapet wall. Due to, you know, unavailability of of materials or equipment, in this case, a piece of HVAC equipment, roof-mounted HVAC equipment had to be switched out with a different kind that was slightly taller. So they're proposing to raise the parapet wall of that building by eighteen inches. It's still, it's, it'll be twenty, twenty-three feet, one-half inch, still below the what the ordinance permits. So it's, so it's being raised by eighteen inches and that's really the only difference from a, okay. So it's almost, so it's the minimus in your opinion? Yeah, yes, that would be my opinion. Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, Mr. Gallagher, I have a question. You said you added ten spaces. Can you show me where you added these ten spaces?
So the the, they're not all in one location. Just as a result of the the overall layout change, there was some additional parking in this area, but we also lost some parking along the, for instance, the front of the Turning Point Building. And we added back some parking to the, around the the proposed retail building. So this is where, these are the the two areas where there's a really an addition in parking. But again, there's also a reduction in parking along the fronts of the building. So it's a a net increase of ten spaces.
Why not, why not just make that land like the landscaping or something? Why add the additional parking?
Just to have sufficient parking so that everybody can, you know, park safely and legally and to have as much convenient parking in proximity to the doors as possible.
Okay, so you guys never thought about maybe not adding the additional ten spaces?
Honestly, no, because we want to make sure that we have an adequate amount of parking, you know, while the ordinance might require a specific ratio, these tenants, you know, know their businesses and and feel that this is an appropriate amount of parking. And and really, it ended up, we were able to accommodate those ten spaces with, while still decreasing impervious surfaces. So I I felt it was, you know, a worthwhile addition.
Just one additional comment on my part is that you'll see the five spaces that are added that face Route thirty-five. And one of my comments is that there is no landscaping that's screening those spaces from view from the highway. And if those spaces are going to be provided, there should be additional landscaping that that screens those spaces.
Yeah, let me, and Mike, before you answer that, Mr. Higgins, and I might as well get Bennett also. If you can both just raise your hands, do you both swear the name testimony you're going to give or just gave is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self both you got?
I do.
Go ahead, Mr. Gallagher. So, um, yeah, with regards to to Mr. Higgins' comment, we will absolutely add additional landscape screening along these five parking spaces and at the end of this parking row as well, just to further screen those parking spaces and the headlights from Route thirty-five and Deal Road. That is not an issue.
And Mr. Gallagher will work out the details of that landscaping with Mr. Higgins?
Absolutely. And additionally, I did also want to mention, we were proposing to preserve a second. And additionally, uh, I did also want to mention, uh, we were proposing to preserve a second tree on this, uh, in this area. Which uh, unfortunately fell down uh, during the clearing process as a result of a storm, uh, I, I, my opinion is the, the. The clearing of some of the trees around it weakened the, 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 the tree itself and it fell down during a storm. Uh, and we've proposed to rip, uh, compensate and replace that tree with two fifteen-inch red oaks. Uh, they'll be fifteen inches at planting, which is a, a, a significant tree, um, uh. We've located them in ideal places so that uh, they'll get plenty of water and, cause as, when you plant a tree of that size at, at planting. Uh, they actually have a, a, a lesser success rate than some of the smaller sides, uh, sizes, so we'll want to make sure that they're in, uh, you know. He- heavily landscaped areas that will receive plenty of water and be fully irrigated.
Mr. Gallagher, can you go back to A four, A five and show the board the locations of those two trees that you're replying, using repeatedly?
This is one of the red oaks and then along Road A, we're proposing a, a second, which those, you know, we're, we're open to. Uh, suggestions as to where to place them, that's just, the two, as I mentioned, we want them in, uh, you know, open landscaped areas where they'll. Uh, we, it's, for instance, we wouldn't want them in a, in a small planted island such as this, we want to give them room to grow.
Yeah, one of the things we discussed when we were going over this in the technical review meeting is putting that second one over. Near the, the intersection of Deal Road and the uh, the jug handle, just uh, basically. South of the proposed retail building and that, in that area there, so it'll be much more visible.
I don't think that's a problem, we can do that.
But that's, I think that would be a better location for it.
Where was the other tree that fell down?
It was along Route thirty-five up in, up in this area.
Okay.
So we will relocate that second tree to the location preferred by Mr. Higgins?
Absolutely.
Uh, actually, uh, I have a question on that, um, Jim, and, and this is purely a, a question because. I'm not the expert, uh, Norm Colton, who wrote the Environmental Commission's report is. Uh, placing that one closer to the corner, I know Norm had raised some concerns in the Environmental Commission's report about the uh, road salt. Possibly affecting the root structures, given that there's the stormwater management features along thirty-five, do you think it will be protected there? Or is it something we need to take into consideration and maybe keep it further back from whether.
Along thirty-five or along Deal Road? What I'm suggesting is that it'd be along Deal Road right where the, the uh, cursor is right now.
Somewhere in this area. Gotcha, okay, I, I misunderstood what you were saying, yeah, I think that's okay.
Okay.
Mr. Gallagher, do you have any more to continue?
Yeah, and really I, I have no other direct, um, uh, I went through uh, Mr. Higgins' letter and Mr. Matt Lax's letter, I have no issue with their comments, uh, we can continue. Continue to work to finalize the plans.
Any other board members?
I just have, I just have one question for Ms. Gallagher, Ms. Gallagher, in your, in your opinion, uh, has anything altered on the plan that would make it uh, less successful than the previous plan? Or do you actually feel this is the better plan?
I, I believe this is a better plan, uh, the, the, the swapping of the restaurants really do- doesn't necessarily make a difference. From an operational standpoint, there are a few benefits of it, uh, I think having the outdoor dining area under, you know, near the, the, the beautiful beach tree that we've been working to preserve since the beginning of the project. Uh, is, is a nice addition, the service area actually narrowed slightly, so there's less of a, less open, uh, less of an open loading zone. And um, I, I think the, the, having another retail building where you can have some, uh, you know, some back and forth foot travel between the two. Retail uses and then the two restaurants, uh, really works out nicely, I think the bank int- would introduce, uh, you know, there'd be some walk, you know, pedestrian business between the uses with a bank, but I think it'll be. A lot more enhanced and they'll work to the, the site will work together, uh, more, you know, nice, very nicely in this configuration.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I, I did have one question, he alluded to the trees being fifteen inches, did you mean fifteen feet?
No, the, the caliper, the diameter of the tree will be fifteen inches at planting, usually when you uh, plant a tree. Uh, in a new development such as this, they're two and a half to three inches, uh, so that gives you a sensor, basically five times larger than a tree you would normally plant, like. For instance, most of the trees proposed that you see here at planting will be uh, either two and a half, three or four inches. So those two trees to compensate for the one that we lost will be fifteen inches, so that they're, they already have a head start essentially.
They're, they're going to be huge trees, they're going to be probably twenty-five feet high when, at least when they're planted. Uh, and the tree that was, that fell was a thirty-one inch tree, so replacing with two fifteen inch trees, I think is, is a fair uh, trade-off.
Um, where were they going, where were they going again?
So you have one along Deal Road, basically to the east of the beach tree, and then you had the second along Road A, but Mr. Higgins asked if we can move it a little further to the south along Road A. In this general area, which we have no real issue with that.
Okay.
And then the other issue in my report, and I hate to bring this up, but I think it's something that does have to be looked at, is that the existing beach tree, hopefully it survives. But it may or may not survive, given the fact there's been so much construction around it, and I think there, if the board approves the application, I think there has to be some provision. For adequate replacement of that beach tree, and quite frankly, if you lose the beach tree, you're not going to find a beach tree. That is even two and a half to three inch caliper, I, I searched all over the internet and most beach trees that are for sale are very, very small, almost seed- seedlings, saplings. Um, so I think there has to be some provision for replacing that tree, should it not survive.
What, what's the equivalent?
There, there, I, there is no equivalent.
No, but I mean, like, what do you, what do you think we're asking for?
Right, my suggestion would be that it be replaced by a minimum ten inch caliper specimen tree. And that the, that tree be determined by combination myself and the Environmental Commission.
Mr. Gallagher, do we have any issues with that?
No, no, we're completely open to suggestions and uh, support the idea, I, 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 I personally am an optimist that we'll be able to, to work out. Uh, protecting this tree throughout the construction process, uh, we've directed the contractor to use soft dig methods. When uh, doing any earthwork anywhere within the root zone of the tree, obviously where, everything's outside of. The, the canopy, the drip line of the tree, but uh, a tree this size, eh, the root system can extend beyond that, so we would propose soft dig methods and things of that nature. Um, and we also shifted the paver plaza a little further to the south away from uh, the trunk of the tree to be within. Uh, the half width of the critical root zone where you can have some vary, you can make some changes to the grade. Of up to, you know, four to six inches, so we think that the, the plaza will not affect it at all, and uh, with some of the other methods, we're, we're confident that uh. The, you know, none of the other construction will uh, impact it, but absolutely, we're, we, we completely support any suggestions, uh, should that, that, you know, tree not make it.
And Mr. Higgins, how much caliber did you say?
I said ten inch.
Ten inch, thank you.
Hey, something I don't see on the plan, I'm just kind of curious, there, there was supposed to be, and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong. But, or, or Pete, or, I'm, I'm not sure who else was, i- is on the line, but we were supposed to have some. Some way to memorialize what actually this area was all about, is that someplace, I don't see that anyplace.
So, I mean, so our thought, we, we, that would can still be in development, we can maintain a dialogue with the township on that, because I agree, that would be a very nice feature. Uh, I would envision it somewhere, you know, maybe a plaque uh, in front of the, the relocated well, just to again state what uh, was originally on the property and some of the history associated with it. But it's another area, we're, we're completely open to suggestions.
Yeah, Jeff, I remember that as well, because it was the conversation when we talked about preserving the well, that the preservation of the well would include a plaque or some other memorialization.
Yeah, kind of denoting the historical significance of the land, what's happened there and uh, but if it's in there, how, how the heck we, who's seeing that? Just to, just out of curiosity, where, where is this being seen, by whom, by the people who are having uh. By the people who are coming from where?
Well, I mean, we, if you remember, this is uh, the ten-foot mixed-use path, uh, multi-use path, so, you know, pedestrians walking along Deal Road. Uh, stopping to, you know, s- sit at that plaza where people waiting for their table at the restaurant may come over there and sit, so. Um, you know, the, the anticipation is that it's somewhere with some, some foot, you know, decent amount of foot traffic.
Hmm, yeah, so I have a couple of things, the first thing is that you said that the fifteen inch tree, the diameter of it. Is less likely to survive than a smaller caliper tree, is that correct?
Yeah, when I say less likely, I don't mean that, oh, it's, it's doomed, I just mean that the, the success rate of the smaller caliper trees is generally higher. Um, at planting.
Let me e- expand upon that a little bit, because I, I do, having been a landscape architect, I've experienced with this type of thing. Generally, when you go to like a two and a half to three inch tree, up to like a five inch, six inch tree, they're hand dug, the balls are kept smaller. And it's difficult, as the tree gets bigger, the root system gets damaged somewhat, and they, they don't survive as well. When you're talking a fifteen inch tree, that's dug up with a huge tree spade. And the bulk of the root system is left intact when it's done, and it's, that's actually more likely to survive than like a six to, six to seven inch caliper tree. So I think it's good, there's a good chance of these trees surviving, a better chance than like a four to, four inch to six inch caliper tree. But clearly not as good a chances of two and a half to three inch caliper, so if they have to be replaced again.
The reason why I bring that up is, eh, you know, I, I am concerned about the trees and, and um, the additional ten spaces and whether or not I really even. I, I, I'm not really sure that I really like this spot that you chose to put this uh, the well. Off the side of Deal Road here, I mean, it's really not accessible for the site, uh, it's behind two commercial buildings, I, I just don't see it, I, I don't see the vision there. So I'm a little disappointed about that, I'm disappointed about additional spaces and um, I'm concerned about the trees, I'm, so from my standpoint. I'd like to see, I, I know you're putting in two trees and it sounds adequate, but I would like to see more, maybe, maybe you put four trees in. In hoping that we will have two viable trees. And, you know, more is better than less, and, and, and then having this additional ten spaces, I don't like, I'm not a big fan of that either, but. Uh, you know, if you do something for additional trees, I think that helps.
I, I don't, I don't think we would have an issue do, putting in additional trees, I, that would, had been part of my discussion with uh, Mr. Matlack prior to the hearing that we would. Uh, just add, supplement i- in a couple of locations, I, I don't think that would be an issue to add a, a couple more. Uh, trees regarding.
About four fifteen inch trees, are you talking about four ten, four ten inch trees, uh, what, what are you talking about there, or two fifteen inch and two three inch trees? As far as numbers, what, what, what's your vision there?
Uh, uh, my vision is, is that, you know, we lost a pretty significant tree on the, on the, on the property and. You know, we're, the suggestion is to replace with two fifteen caliber trees, which I, I understand and it's, that's wonderful, but I'd like to make sure that we really get. What we're looking to hope to get, so you know, i- if it means putting in four of those fifteen caliber or maybe two, two fifteens and two tens, I don't know, I, I. But something more than just the two trees. And, you know, and I am, I am concerned about the fact that the, you know, the additional spaces, that that we lose uh, land. Because of the additional ten spaces.
In that area, there was outdoor seating in that area that was well landscaped.
I'm sorry, so, so where's the?
Uh, there was outdoor seating in the area where those spaces are now, now extend down to the east of building, I guess it's now building B.
Yeah, I mean, do they, Jim, do they really need the additional spaces?
From an ordinance standpoint, no.
Okay.
Whether they need them from a functional standpoint, I don't know, so I, I don't have an answer to that, and I. You'd have to rely on the testimony that's given to you and they're relying on what the input is they're getting from the restaurants.
I see what you're saying, so the, the original paver plaza was located in that area, so you're sticking to the plan. And trying to organize it today, okay, so.
Essentially, yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay, makes sense.
Yeah, so it, it had, it had been here, we did shift it to the east a little bit to, to center on the, on the beach.
Well, that's, that's the well, I think Joe was talking about the, like, the landscaping and the, the.
Oh, yeah, he, I.
Parking.
He did also mention the location of the well, so I was just pointing out that it is in a similar location to the ad- original approval.
Okay.
And it's actually made a little bit more visible.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, yeah.
So to, so to come back to the trees, um, for, as far as location for additional trees, I just want to make sure. W- w- we're willing to work with the board and with Mr. Higgins on the placement of trees, um, I, I'm not sure if we know off the top of our heads that. Two additional fifteen inch caliber trees or ten inch caliber trees will actually fit. In the landscape areas without losing other vegetation and landscaping, so, and or just fit in general, so I think we need to just agree, we would agree to work out those details with Mr. Higgins. To his satisfaction, knowing what your direction is there, Chairman Di Benedetto.
My suggestion would be uh, the two fifteen inch caliber trees and then two additional four to five inch caliber trees to be located somewhere. I, that's, that's fair to the applicant, and I think it's, it's a good suggestion and that they're, they're larger trees and, and they, hopefully they will survive as long as they're in an area that's well irrigated.
Okay, um, Mr. Higgins, you want to do your report, you want to read it?
I think they've covered everything in my report.
Okay.
I'm seeing need to do it, if the board wants me to, I will.
Um, can you just uh, summarize your findings?
Sure, I'm hanging on one minute, there we go, basically I went through uh, the changes, which are the swapping of the buildings, the reduction of floor area in the. Building A, which is a two-story building, uh, the increase in the floor area to building B, which was described, and replacing the approved bank. With a smaller retail building and eliminating the drive-through, uh, the re- reconfiguration of the parking and loading areas. Relocating the existing well structure, and the one thing I don't think was emphasized, I think it was discussed is they're providing uh, decorative pavers. And portions of the parking lot that weren't there before, and the ordinance actually encourages that type of pavement in, in the uh. Parking areas, so I think that's an improvement, and then replacing the thirty-one inch caliber oak tree that was blown down. Um, there's a minor discrepancy between the floor area that's listed in the application and what's shown on the plans, and I think the, the testimony covers that. Um, the application doesn't substantially change the nature of the development, I think it helps traffic circulation a little bit by eliminating the drive-through. And I talk about the loss of the oak and replacement, and now we're talking about replacing it with two fifteen inch trees and with two four to five inch trees also. Uh, and then the discussion of what should be done in the event that the, hopefully it doesn't, but in the event that the beach should die, how to replace that. And then the additional landscaping at the corner of thirty-five and Deal to screen those parking spaces.
Okay, anyone else have any questions for Mr. Higgins?
I do.
Go ahead, Stowe.
Regarding um, this additional parking spaces that are being proposed versus um. The sitting area, another area of where they, we, you know, where people can sit and relax and it's not so uh. Asphalt or pavers or whatever you want to call it, where is that at now, where are we talking about on the map?
We're talking about right closest to the intersection of Deal Road and Route thirty-five, to the immediate west of, I think that's building B now.
So.
The one-story restaurant building.
Right, and there's no other alternative?
To relocate them, I don't think so, no, uh, one thing that wasn't discussed uh, is that. While the, the bank building, what was the bank building is being reduced to, to square footage and becoming a retail building, the fact that the drive-through. Is being removed, probably slightly increases the need for parking, even though the parking is still uh, compliant with the ordinance. The drive-through would take up a number of parking spaces. Would replace a number of parking spaces, so, so it might be an, an adequate trade-off, my biggest concern is that the landscaping at that intersection be, be adequate. I would, I would prefer to see that whole area landscaped, but I understand the applicant's desire to get as much parking as possible with the restaurants that are there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Madlock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, most of my con, my report was already addressed, but I will go through it for the board's benefit. I also noted about the, the heavy duty pavers. I, that was a, a discussion that we had had at meeting before this meeting. And there were some iterations back and forth of, of what type of treatment would be within the parking area. And I think the heavy duty pavers are, are the best option. And we just need a detail on the plans, which I'm, I'm sure can be provided. The, let's see. There was a adequate discussion about the relocated well and the Paver Plaza. As well as the additional Paver Plaza that was added at the intersection of Roads A and B. I did note that there were some changes to the numbers of trees overall throughout the site, just based on, you know, changes to the buildings and, and air, different areas. While the total number of landscaping, of all the landscaping went up, the total number of trees was reduced. And Mr. Gallagher and I did talk about this before the meeting today. And, and I, he mentioned it earlier that he's willing to, you know, meet the number of lands, of trees that were originally approved. Because there was, you know, tree compensation originally required. So I think it's important that the board gets the same number of trees that was originally agreed to. There was a discussion about the ten parking spaces. I think I, I agree with, with both Jim and with the applicant. The amount of parking, they, they don't need the ten parking spaces to comply with the ordinance. However, it's based on, you know, the uses of the site. What works best for the, for the different buildings that are there, the different restaurants and the retail. And one question I do have is the, I'm not sure if it was, it's entirely clear, the, the two fifteen inch trees and, and now the additional two four to five inch trees. I, I don't want the board to think that, you know, these trees are just going to be planted and if, if they don't survive, well then tough break. I, I think it's, it should be that if they don't survive, they will be replaced with trees that, that will survive.
And, yeah, Mr. Matlock, that is absolutely true. It's not as, you're approving a landscaping plan. And the landscaping plan becomes part of the approval. If, if something within that landscaping plan dies, it doesn't matter when they die. It could be twenty years from now if they die. They've got to be replaced because it's part of the approved site plan. So I, the board should understand that and I know the applicant knows that.
And I agree with Ben that the number of trees planted should be the same as the number that were originally approved because otherwise that impacts the waiver that was granted.
And that's, that's all I had from my report, Mr. Chairman.
So you're saying that they have agreed to bring up the total of trees to the original approval?
Yes. Mr. Gallagher can, can answer that, I'm sure.
Mr. Gallagher, would you speak to that for, on behalf of the applicant? I can't give.
Absolutely, yeah. It, it, you know, it was not done intentionally. It, it was just a matter of the, the changes to the layout. It resulted in a couple fewer deciduous trees in the parking areas. A handful of, or about, what, what was it, Ben? Seventeen evergreen trees, which were basically in this area where we're adding the plaza and augmenting and a couple of other locations. So it's really no issue to reincorporate those trees back into the plan. In addition, you know, as, as part of the, the, the additional trees, we've already agreed to plant.
Okay, so you, you are agreeing to doing the four, four trees for the beach tree that we lost?
It was, it was an oak tree.
For the oak tree, correct.
Okay, and then for the beach tree, that if we do lose that tree, can we do the same for, for that tree? In the event that we lose the beach tree?
I mean, we would certainly replace with, with a tree in that location. I, I,
Hold on just a second, Michael. I, I think Chairman Di Benedetto, I think the better idea is to agree to work out a replacement plan with Mr. Higgins. So he can have some time to look at the site, determine what will fit where as a replacement for that beach tree. If indeed something unfortunate happens to it.
What Mr. Higgins had previously indicated was that if the beach tree is lost, it should be replaced by a ten inch caliber tree. That that was going to be approved by the board planner and the environmental committee, commission rather.
That's fine, but I don't, I, I want my two cents and my two cents say is that I want more, if you're going, if we lose another big specimen tree, I want more trees. I'm not really happy with one ten inch caliber tree. I, I'm sorry. So I, I, I know that, and you know, I trust that Jim will do his best, but I, I want to hear from the applicant that they're going to stand behind the trees, especially since the fact that, you know, Mr. Matlock says that, that you reduce the trees and you say inadvertently, but I, I mean, you reduce the trees on the plans. I would leave you looking for more, not less, or the minimum. I want more.
Right, and that was my suggestion. I wasn't sure that one ten inch tree that was mentioned earlier would be sufficient. But I don't know that Mr. Higgins has a suggestion at the moment for what would be sufficient. That was my, the reason I suggested we continue to agree to work it out with Mr. Higgins and the environmental commission in that unfortunate and unlikely, but unlikely event. And, and we have agreed to to put in sufficient trees to meet the overall number of trees that were originally approved. So you're not losing any trees at this point. So we'll defer to your preference, but I don't know that we're in a position to say we can fit another, for example, two fifteen inch and two five to six inch trees somewhere on site without further investigation. I think I would think if, if you trust your environmental commission, that we would agree to at least meet the caliber of tree that has been lost with the beach tree and to determine at some point how we, you know, how we meet that in other locations with different types of trees.
That's, that's a good suggestion that the caliper of the beach tree as it exists now should be identified. And that the replacements for trees, if that tree should die, the total caliber should equate to the caliber of the beach tree.
I'd go with that. I'm in for that. Mr. Gallagher, would you go with that?
Yeah, I have no issue with that whatsoever. I, as, as Ms. Walters suggested, we would just want some additional time just to properly cite the compensation trees to make sure they're going in an appropriate location where they'll thrive.
Okay.
That, that location could be determined with, in combination with me and the environmental commission. Or, or if it's a township engineer that's reviewing it, the township engineer.
Of course. Any other questions from the board?
But Mr. Chair, on that point, we're going to need the, we're going to need what the caliber of that tree is.
It's fifty, it's fifty-two inches.
We know that. Okay, fifty-two inches, okay.
Wow.
It's a monster.
Thank you.
Literally been driving by that tree for as long as I can remember.
That's why we're going to try that. That's why we're actually pleased with the relocation, the swapping of the two buildings. Cause it enabled us to save that tree. That tree wasn't going to be saved before now. So now we're able to save that tree and that's why we're going to try so hard to make sure we maintain it because it's significant for everybody involved, including the applicant. It's a statement tree for the site.
I don't know if there's anybody in this meeting right now that has their initials carved on it or not.
Jim, that's not a good suggestion.
That's just, that's typical of beach trees.
Okay, anyone else from the board have any questions for any of the professionals? Okay. I, I think we can. You, Ms. Walters, you're, you're good where you are?
I believe we've answered everything. I think the one thing I just want Mr. Gallagher to go back and point out for the board real quick. He mentioned it early on and I think we kind of bypassed the significance of it a little bit. When we were talking about what trees we're losing, we obviously are replacing all, any lost trees. But we, we were adding, you had mentioned earlier, Mr. Gallagher, that we're actually decreasing impervious by a bit. And that's through the addition of, you mentioned three thousand plus individual pedestrian level plantings throughout this section of the site. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
So overall, we're gaining in our impervious, I mean, we're gaining in our landscape coverage?
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure the board, the board heard that.
On a site this large, it's, it's somewhat of a de minimis decrease in impervious, but it is, it is a decrease.
That's all I have for Mr. Gallagher. And I don't have any other witnesses for the board.
All right, very good. All right, so we're going to close the, that part of the the meeting and we'll open up for public comments. So I need you to state your name, your address and questions for any of the professionals. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, when they do.
What's that?
I said I'll swear them in also.
Yes, anyone from the public, any of any questions? Nope. Okay, we can close the public hearing, that portion. And do we need to stipulate Mr. Luxine on exactly all the changes or, or agreed upon on the trees and this and that? Do we need to do any of that?
I, I don't think so. As long as the board knows what, what we just said, I have them all in my notes and, and they'll all be incorporated into the resolution.
Okay, so I make a positive resolution to approve the site plan. amended site, site plan. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Amy, can we do a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Defilia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Siano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Ades?
Yeah.
Mr. Badnovich?
Yes.
And Chairman Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you, thank you very much, everybody.
I make a motion to close the, the meeting. We need to do a roll call for this, Miss Luxine?
Now, that can be by voice vote.
Okay.
You do need a second though.
Second.
Oh, all right. All in favor of closing the meeting? All right.
Thank you.
All right, good night, guys.
Hi, everybody.